Falls Church City Council, we're pleased that you all are able to join us this evening. Madam Clerk, do you have a notice you'd like to read?
I do. The meeting for which this agenda was posted is being held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All participating members of City Council are present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public may view the meeting at fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings and on FCC TV, which is Cox Channel 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. Public comments will be accepted virtually by those who have signed up to speak via the meeting platform. That is both for public hearings and for general public comment. And if folks would like to email any written public comments, they can send them to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov.
All right, thank you. Would you like to call roll also?
I would. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Ms. Schatz Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
And Mayor Carter?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
All right, thank you. It looks like Mr. Tax just joined us as well for his public comment. So seeing the flags in front of us, it's now time for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask you all, wherever you might be, to please stand and rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So let's keep on going. So do you want to move on to the summary of written comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Regarding the budget, M.C.I.P., Brian Gish of North Van Buren Street urged Council to adopt at least a six cent cut in the real estate tax. On other matters, Donald Camp of 134 North Fairfax Street requested that the issuance of block party permits be resumed on May 15 when some of the state COVID restrictions are due to be loosened. David Peacock, 235 Irving Street, wrote regarding safety concerns about performance cars that regularly use Irving and Ellison Streets near Berman Park as a testing ground. Vipis provided a letter outlining concerns about the 30% design plan for sidewalk expansion on the southern side of West Broad Street that was recently presented to the Planning Commission. They are concerned that the design did not include a nature zone, utility undergrounding North Street trees, and did not meet the city's streetscape standards. From boards and commissions, the CACT provided an equity review of and comments on the City Council work planned, and that's what we've received.
All right, thank you much. So now let's move on to the receipt of public comment. I presume Mr. Tax is here and available for public comment. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
I did not have anybody else sign up this evening.
All right, would you like to welcome Mr. Tax to our meeting?
Mr. Tax, if you want to unmute yourself, and you can turn your camera on and present your comment, and you have three minutes.
Is my camera on now?
Uh, I can't see you. Let's see. Oh, yep, there you are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm David Tax, and I'm a Clarence Donsby chef at 130 North Washington Street in Falls As we've struggled to survive over the past year, like many other restaurants, we've expanded our outside dining to an area that had been previously parking access. It's really been the only thing that's allowed us to scrape by during COVID. However, unlike other businesses, we're in a kind of unique position of continuing to use the space as part of an easement from our landlord to the city that allows access to the parking lot. You're probably, you might all be aware, that within next year, this area will be subsumed by the Inside Project, a mixed-use development. When the construction fence goes up, our landlord property will no longer be part of the public right of way, and we asked permission to continue to use the area on our patio, and he happily agreed. Thompson's will also be using their portion of the patio as a portion of the parking lot as their patio. In anticipation of this, we applied to the VABC to include this on our license. This gave, they gave us this list of steps in order to complete, in order to complete the application. Their list comprised of landlord approval, site drawing, a visit from the ABC officer, a copy of our lease, a letter of approval from the fire marshal, and one from zoning office. Well, several weeks have in, and we've checked off everything off the list except for the letter from the zoning office. Frankly, I'm here because I feel like one of the people who we have dealt with over the past month, John Boyle, Paul Stotter, Gary Fuller, Wyatt Shields, yes, they all saw it, should have been able to help us check off the last item off of our list. When the governor speaks later on this week, he may very well announce to roll back some of the COVID era permissions. As it stands right now, we're at the mercy of the city, immediately be in violation of our ABC license. Given our unique position of having our landlords a blessing as owner of the land and in question, it seems to us that the city would be happy to support us in achieving our goal and staying open. I honestly think that the need to enumerate the ways that we've supported the city and plan to continue to do so, I mean, I know you all and you know me, we plan to continue to do so. We just want to be able to be able to support ourselves and support our staff while providing the most fun-for-all-ages place in town to have dinner, a fruity cocktail, and listen to some live music. The live music is the integral part of this because the ABC designates where the live music can be with the COVID extension, with the permanent ABC. Then we'd be able to put the music where we needed to and therefore be able to face it in different directions to kind of take it away from the neighbors, I guess is the best way to say it. At this point, we just need the city to acquiesce, just a two-line letter to acquiesce that the three other entrances and egresses to the current parking lot are sufficient from a safety and zoning standpoint. I'm sorry I had to come before Council to achieve this goal, but I feel like that my previous attempts have seemed to fallen on deaf ears, and time might be running out for us. And I'll keep you all updated, and if you have any other questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them right now as much as I can, or that's it. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
And that was your three minutes. Perfect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tax. Mr. Shields, did you have anything you wanted to say at this point?
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor Carter and Mr. Tax. Good to see you tonight. So for Council, we are working with Mr. Tax and other businesses on the question that's been raised, you know, relating to what will, you know, what is requested is a letter that these are approved permanently and/or some form of that. And so we're working through options on which we can get the businesses what they need. But there are some code requirements that were lifted for COVID, and when the COVID emergency is over, we are going to have to wrestle with what is the new kind of, I think there might need to be some code amendments if we want to keep doing what we have been doing during COVID. And in terms of the atmosphere and the attractive aspects of it, I think they're very compelling, and that's why staff is motivated to work with the, with Mr. Tax and other businesses to help them, you know, with the requests that they've made.
Got it. So I would just suggest to you that I'm sure this is a time-sensitive matter for Mr. Tax and other businesses, and so I think we will all encourage you to do what you need to do as quickly as you can, and if you have recommendations or requests from us, please bring those to us so that it can be done in a timely fashion. I understand that certain things have been relaxed with COVID and the like, and when COVID goes away, those will go back to the normal requirements or normal regulation, and that may be somewhat in conflict with issuing a letter that says these are all permanent. But I would just suggest that whatever we need to do to get on the issue, at least to analyze it, let's do that. Mr. Snyder, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just support what you said, and Wyatt, if there's an issue with the ABC enforcement agency or whatever it is, let's get on this absolutely as soon as possible. These are businesses that serve our customers, that attract regional clientele, so please let us know if there's anything we need to do, but please move on this. Thank you.
All right. Were there any other comments, public comments, Madam Clerk?
I did receive an email. I think it may be for the school board, but it was addressed to Council. Mr. Tony Shipman wrote about the name change at the high school, and he wrote against it and suggested that it not happen or that it be postponed, decision might be postponed. I did also forward that to the school board.
Got it, thank you. All right, so unless there's any other public comment, why don't we move on to the report of the Housing Commission?
Yes, and we have.
Is Mr. Shakur?
Shakur, yes.
Uh-huh. All right, welcome. Josh?
Yeah, good evening, City Council. My name is Joshua Shakur. I'm the Chair of the Housing Commission. So thank you for providing me the opportunity tonight to present on the Housing Commission's annual report highlighting the many accomplishments of the past year. On behalf of the entire commission, I want to begin by congratulating you on your efforts to advance the most inclusive housing policies and priorities this city has witnessed in decades. I want to specifically spotlight the advocacy and community organizing on the part of our council liaison to the Housing Commission, Councilwoman Hardy. Without her tireless support and coalition building, many of these new initiatives and policies, including the dedication of $100,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, would have never been realized. In the backdrop of the global pandemic and our national reckoning on systemic racism, I can proudly state that Falls Church rose to the moment, and our response as a community was remarkable, especially given our history and the obstacles we had to overcome. The first objective was, of course, to keep people housed. The city staff working in the Department of Housing and Human Services, led by Nancy Vincent and Dana Lewis, spearheaded and organized an effective emergency rental assistance program, targeting our most vulnerable populations and ensuring that they were safely and stably housed throughout the past year and continuing to today. After meeting with several residents residing in rental properties, one of our most prescient and innovative commissioners, Pete Davis, came up with an idea to institute a tenant email response system, providing easier access to engaged city staff and deliver valuable information via FAQs. Additionally, the city, working with the National Housing Trust, generated the first study on affordable housing in Falls Church. This study provides a roadmap on how to achieve affordable housing goals in our community and will hopefully inform decision-making in the years ahead. We were also able to develop the cash-in-lud formula for ADUs, which will hopefully provide leverage and flexibility in future negotiations with prospective developers and financial sources for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in Falls Church. While it was difficult to pick favorites from this list, my proudest moment as Commissioner came when Council agreed to increase the percentage of set-aside affordable units from 6% to 10% at the Broad and Washington Development. These, sorry, these will be affordable in perpetuity, and nine of the units will be affordable to households earning 40% AMI. This was a landmark achievement and a move that I and many others have been advocating for years, and I hope it has set a precedent for new developments. The city was also awarded Amazon Reach grant funds for two separate affordable housing projects, one to buy down or subsidize rents of expiring ADUs, and the other to design and implement an affordable homeownership program for the first-time homebuyers seeking to live in Falls Church. The city is already applying to additional awards made available through the Amazon Reach program, and the Housing Commission has provided them with an assortment of ideas for new projects. Lastly, the Housing Commission said goodbye to a few longtime members, M.T. Guzmanis and former Chair Brendan Heffernan, but we were fortunate to welcome two new faces, Christina Martinez and Meredith Anderson. Their work was critical to the achievements of the past year, and I'm excited to see what we can do together in 2021. It is safe to say the Housing Commission has been emboldened by these accomplishments and the swell support we have been witnessing in our community for more affordable and diversified housing. Whether it's op-eds in the local paper, random interactions with residents and fellow boards and commission members, or the arranging of affordable housing forums convened by community-based organizations like the CBC and Legal and Voters, this vital issue seems to only be gaining momentum. So within this report, we have also laid out next steps we are looking to advance as a commission and goals we feel the Council should prioritize going forward. Some of the next steps the Falls Church Housing Commission plans to develop, develop recommendations slash projects.
Is now exiting.
For the Affordable Housing Fund, develop a plan on creating more equitable and diverse housing types in the city, advocate and support more flexible zoning policies and/or the removal of single-family zoning, push for the developed and developed policies to further preserve the, further preservation and creation of affordable housing, locate and gather support for a method of dedicated funding stream for the Affordable Housing Fund, support homelessness initiatives within the city, build more partnerships with other boards, commissions, elected officials, community stakeholders within the city, support and help develop programs funded through rounds of future Amazon Reach grants. We are asking Falls Church City Council to create more inclusionary zoning policies in order to support more diverse housing types, whether this is duplexes, quads, more cottages, accessory dwelling units, we feel this is necessary to meet the often overlooked missing middle of housing. We're also asking Council to develop a plan for future use and strategy for acquiring Virginia Village, quadplexes, and other land/housing opportunities in the city. We missed out on a purchase of a land last year, but we're fortunate with the EDA stepping up to acquire a quad in Virginia Village. Acquiring these properties will preserve the affordability of the units, but will also provide the city with opportunities to redevelop in the future. But a long-term plan is required to justify future acquisitions, and this will, of course, need an affordability component. Also are hoping that City Council increase funding to the Affordable Housing Fund. Without financial resources, many of the commission's and city's goals will go nowhere, so we must continue to provide funding to the Affordable Housing Fund to preserve expiring units and acquire and develop new projects in the future. We also ask the Council to advance a proposal to dedicate permanent funding stream to the Affordable Housing Fund. In order to avoid the delicate navigation of the operating budget each year, a dedicated funding stream is required. There are many examples that can be found around the region that have achieved much with little to no impact on citizens and small businesses. The city should initiate a study on the possible effects of such a funding mechanism. We also think the Council should continue to increase the percentage of ADUs at new multifamily developments. This is the easiest way to increase affordable housing in the city and might also be the most equitable. It goes without saying that we should continue to utilize ADUs as a source of creating new mixed housing types. We must increase the rate of these units because currently we are losing more units faster than we can build them. And lastly, we're asking the City Council to negotiate a solution to preserve existing affordable housing in the city of Falls Church, specifically targeting the expiring affordable covenants at the Fields apartment complex. We know that the Lytec covenants are expiring within the next five to six years, and a solution needs to be on the table and prepared so we can go for and acquire this property or maintain its affordability in the future. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you also to Ms. Hardy for her leadership on this issue, but specifically to the commission itself and your members and your leadership. You know, there are times when things just really rapidly advance. Environmental issues in the city, I think, just a few years ago went from, you know, should we make this school LEED certified to all our buildings are going to be LEED gold? And so just in a matter of a few short years, dramatic progress was made in this city on that front. I think the same thing's happening right now with respect to housing issues. You know, we've gone from a lot of talk to a lot of action, and so at least my hat's off to you all in particular, but also Ms. Hardy as well, for the great work you guys have done to really advance this issue. But let me open it up now to questions and comments from my colleagues. Anyone have anything they'd like to ask? All right, well, it looks like you're getting the unreserved applause and attention of my colleagues, and I do want to thank you for, again, just doing some great work, and I think you have our commitment as a council to continue to advance these issues. I think we've really made some great progress in this past year. We've got a big head of steam to keep working on these issues in the coming years, so thank you again for the great work you all are doing.
Yeah, and I want to say again, Mayor, and all Council, thank you for pushing and achieving these goals and making them a priority, whether it's the $100,000 funding or increasing the units from 6% to 10%. I mean, it's monumental change, and it happened in such a short time, and I know that it's going a long way to meeting the city's vision goals for 2040 and making our community more inclusive and diverse in the future. So thank you all.
All right, thank you. So let's move on now to the report of the city manager, or now we're going to council request. Any council requests before we go to the report of the city manager?
I have a request.
Did you ever, is that Vice Mayor Conley?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to note the request from Mr. Peacock about cars racing in his neighborhood, and I'm just wondering, for Mr. Shields, that email came in sometime in the last two weeks. Has that been referred to the police department? Is there anything we can do about that?
It has been, and I, we've also engaged with our Wreckin' Park staff and our planning staff because we're engaged right now in the design of the Berman Park crossings there at Irving and Kent, and looking to see within those designs whether we could actually have some traffic calming that would be helpful to speeding on those streets. But we also have notified the police that they will be on the lookout for this behavior.
Okay, that sounds very alarming just because they aren't very large streets and people live on them and walk across there a lot. Thank you.
I would also note it's very close in my neighborhood as well, so I live on Kent Street, and so I think I know what he's referring to.
All right, thank you. Are there other council requests before I move on to the report of the city manager? All right, Mr. Shields, let's go on to your report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Carter, and members of council. Just three things to report. One, I did want to give a thank you to the Office of Congressman Don Byer, who did reach out to the city just to explain what the community request process will look like. Community requests are what we traditionally refer to as earmarks in the appropriations process. Cindy Mester has been our staff lead on this, so also a big thank you to Cindy. And we have been engaged with the Congressman's Office on Priorities in the area of stormwater, affordable housing, electric school bus initiative, and traffic congestion mitigation as sort of four areas of priority, and we'll continue to work with them on those priorities, and we'll have more to report back to the City Council on any progress through the federal appropriations process in those areas. I'll take, I know this will be mentioned later in the meeting, but I thought I'd take a little of my time tonight just to give a plug for the Women's History Walk, which is scheduled for this Sunday, May 2, May 2, from 11 to 2. And information is available on that event. It was plugged in the eFocus last week as well, but I think that should be a very nice event, and so we're looking forward to that on Sunday this coming May. I'm sure that will be mentioned also during council comments. And then lastly, we have put out to the public the plans for Memorial Day, and the, we're are looking forward to it this year. We will have in-person events, including the actual Memorial Day ceremony at Veterans, at the Veterans Garden there right in front of the community center. We will do so safely, and we'll do so in a very organized way, but it will be very nice to get back to in-person events. We won't have the big, some of the things like the parade down Park Avenue is not part of the plans, but we are intending to have a parade that will go out into the neighborhoods, sort of bringing the parade to the people to avoid some of the crowds that are always associated with the parade. In addition, we are working and we believe we'll have the Marine Corps Band that will be here to make, to have a performance and here in the city, and that would be a really wonderful new feature to the Memorial Day ceremonies. We are planning to have that in Cherry Hill Park, and that also will be done in a way that is, maintains reasonable social distancing, but also will be, I think, a very positive way to celebrate Memorial Day this year. So I wanted to, there'll be much more publicity about this as we get closer to Memorial Day, but I just wanted to get word out that we are, I think, moving in positive directions for that celebration this year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Wyatt, that's good news to hear that we'll have some normalcy returning. On that note, for a future work session, I know staff has been working on this, but can we have a discussion on the current thinking on the reopening of City Hall, as well as when we might resume in-person meeting or some sort of hybrid and what that path looks like?
Yes, so we will schedule that as a work session item. We have been working on that and expect to be moving in that direction soon.
Great.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, so Wyatt, I wanted to make sure that we mentioned great staff work and happy to have moved its approval of a TLC grant, Transportation and Land Use Planning Grant from the COG Transportation Planning Board for the east part of the city. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that staff was critical to that, and it was a pleasure to vote for the package of projects. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. That is great, and thank you for your support for that. It's a $60,000 grant to the city to help us with our small area plan for the east side of the city, including the Eden Center, and we have had a very positive track record with these TLC grants. We've executed them very successfully in the past, and so it's great to be able to have this next opportunity.
All right, any other comments or questions? Ms. Hiscott?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on your meeting with Byer and crew on the anticipated timeframe for decisions on the earmarks. Was that discussed at all, just in terms of what we can anticipate and the likelihood of receiving any of those funds and the timing in which we could possibly receive them?
Yeah, in my report, I was just sort of keeping up at the high conceptual level, and Cindy's been working this with Congressman Byer's office. Cindy, do you have an update on some of the more, some of the details in this question?
Sure. For both the community requests and the two projects we put in for the American Jobs Transportation Infrastructure, Congressman Byer's office and the Congresswoman were making decisions this week as to what he would put forth into the legislation, and so we'll have a milestone check-in this week when we hear the results of his deliberations for his entire district. And then June and July will be the peak of the time for Congress anticipated to work on the bills, and hopefully by the end of July, we'll see what the budget is, and then funding would be available October 1 on the federal fiscal year for whatever is approved based on our requests.
Thank you.
All right, unless there's any other questions, let's move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have four budget items for second hearing and public here, second reading and public hearings. Would you like me to read all of those together?
Yes, please.
Okay. The first one is TO 21-04 Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues and Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. We have TO 21-05 Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY '22 to FY 2027 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2022. We have TO 21-06 Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate for Tax Year 2022 and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools, and All Other Property. and on Personal Property, Machinery and Tools, and All Other Property Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for Tax Year 2021. And we have TO 21-07 Ordinance to Set the Stormwater Utility Billing Unit Rate in accordance with Chapter 42, Article 7 of the Code of the City of Falls Church, Virginia.
All right, thank you very much. I understand some of us may have disclosures we'd like to make. Vice Mayor Connolly or Mr. Snyder, is anything you'd like to say before we get started?
I'm not quite ready. Maybe Mr. Snyder wants to go first.
Yeah, so I want to disclose that my independent daughter is an employee of the Falls Church School Board that I can participate in the budget discussion in a matter that is both fair and in public interest. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd like to make a statement as well, unless Vice Mayor Connolly is ready. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 21-04, 21-05, 21-06, and 21-07 Adoption of the FY '20, '22 General Budget and CIP Budgets and Tax Rates and Stormwater Fees. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore, I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by this matter. I can participate in this matter fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes, thank you. I make the following statement before city council's discussion of TOs 21-04, 21-05, 21-06, and 21-07 Adoption of the FY '20, '22 General Fund and CIP Budgets and Tax Rates and Stormwater Fee Rates. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board and therefore, a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in them fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
All right, thank you. So, now it's time for our staff report. Mr. Shields, Ms. Bawa, do you have anything you'd like to tell us? Mr. Shields, Ms. Bawa?
Wyatt, you made it.
I was speaking with, I'm sorry about that. So, let me start over. So, Mayor Tarter, members of council, we do have about six slides to share with the council and the communities, the discussions that have come out of the markup session from one week ago. And before I go through those slides, if I could, just take a moment to thank everybody who has participated in the budget process. We've had two town hall meetings, and tonight will be the third public hearing. And we've received many comments through the city's email system and other letters, and really appreciate people weighing in. Also, want to thank Melissa Ryman, who always works so hard to make sure all of the budget documents are accurate and complete, and Cindy for her leadership on the CIP, working with staff to bring to the council our best thinking on strategic investments that will move the city forward in a positive direction over the coming six years. And of course, Karen Bawa, who has worked closely with the council as you've worked through the budget markup process. And so, I'll start by saying, in the budget, really all of the initiatives that were proposed both by Superintendent Noonan and by myself back on March 11, with some slight modifications, those are all remaining intact in this budget. And a lot of the work of the city council has been to explore ways that the city can reduce the tax rate further than was originally proposed and still maintain the high level of services that are proposed in this budget, and also making sure that we're meeting our financial obligations. So, let me go through some of those options in the markup process, and Cindy, if you could advance to the next slide. So, the current real estate tax rate is $1.35 and 1/2. When the city council voted back in March to advertise the budget and the proposed tax rate, it was advertised a penny and 1/2 reduction at $1.34. Through the first round of budget markup, we worked through options to reduce the tax rate an additional penny to $1.33, and that's essentially the base budget that is before the city council tonight, which is referred to as the city manager's recommendation. And to get to that $1.33, there was the elimination of certain capital pay-as-you-go items that include the sidewalks, investment of sidewalks, the neighborhood traffic calming program, and reinvestment in facilities with a expectation that we will be able to use American Recovery Plan dollars to meet those needs going forward. Those are needs that are pretty well-designed for the ARPA program. And given the increase in taxes due to assessed value market increases over the past year at that $1.33 rate, there would still be a pretty significant tax increase on residents in the city. So, the council asked for some additional options, and so those are presented in the staff report as Alternative Motion 1 and Alternative Motion 2. In Alternative Motion 1, you could take another 1/3 of a penny off the tax rate if one were to draw into capital reserves to pay off one of the school-related bonds. This one relating to Mount Daniel is the one that's most convenient for prepayment with the lowest transaction costs, et cetera. So, capital reserves could be used to take $1.5 million of debt off the books, and that would take a 1/3 of a penny off the tax rate, resulting in a rate of $1.32.7. Alternative Motion 2 also uses capital reserves, and it uses $450,000 per year of capital reserves. And this could be really sort of generically school debt, but the high school is the largest debt issuance, so we refer to it as the George Mason High School Debt Service. And if you took $450,000 per year from reserves and spread that out over the next four years, that would essentially be a bridge to when the Mary Ellen Henderson debt comes off the city books, and that will result in a fairly significant decrease in our debt service in 2026. So, essentially, what Alternative Motion Number 2 is, is to take a tax, a penny off the tax rate now, use $450,000 per year in capital reserves to bridge over to that Mary Ellen Henderson debt coming off her books in 2026. In 2026, in all of our financial modeling, we've anticipated that there would be tax cuts in that year because of that debt coming off of our books. This would essentially be taking a penny of that several years early using capital reserves. Next slide. So, this chart summarizes the three options. So, under the city manager's recommendation, that would be a 2.5 cent reduction and resulting in a tax rate of $1.33. That would result in a net increase for the median homeowner in the city and their tax bill of $160. For commercial, because there is a decrease in assessed value for commercial properties, under that scenario, there'd be, on average, a 6.5% decrease for commercial properties and apartments in the city. Alternative Motion 1, sort of go through the same calculations. There, with that extra 1/3 of a penny, you know, this is the result of the savings for homeowners at a net increase of $137. Alternative Motion 2 would take 3.5 cents off the current tax rate, resulting in a rate of $1.32. The net increase for your average homeowner would be an $85 increase in their tax bill, but that would be $263 less than their currently, you know, if the rate was left unchanged at $1.30, $1.35 and 1/2. For commercial, that would be a 7.2% decrease. So, that's just, that chart's just intended to be a summary of the three options that the council has before it tonight. Next slide. And since the strategy really does call for using reserves to either prepay certain debt that is on our books, the Mary, the Mount Daniel debt of 1.5 million, and have that paid off, or using $450,000 per year to bridge over to when the Mary Ellen Henderson debt comes off the books. And none of those scenarios are shown in this projection. This is basically the baseline projection where we will end the current fiscal year with $10.2 million in capital reserves. Next year, it is forecast to grow because we have both the Founder's Row voluntary concession coming on board, as well as a 4.5 million dollar lease payment from Falls Church Gateway Partners. These capital reserves, however, as we've always had them in our capital plan to provide approximately a two-year buffer in the event that there's an economic slowdown that stalled development up at the high school. That high school development obviously has been central to our ability to finance the high school from the beginning. So, really, those next two years are good firm capital reserve projections, and the years after that, they really are just modeled projections. And once we've gotten through the final execution of the ground lease, I think it's anticipated that the capital reserves would actually be able to be deployed to meet city needs across, across the board, rather than necessarily held in reserve, as is shown in this chart. Once we've kind of gotten through the final execution of that deal, then we won't need that two-years buffer that is currently built into all of our financial planning. Next slide, Cindy? So, that wraps up the presentation. Again, you know, we've gotten lots of public comment through this whole process using these avenues that are listed here, and I'll stop here and attempt to answer any questions that we have, and Karen Bawa and Cindy Mester are here to answer questions as well.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shields. Let's go ahead, go ahead and open it up to questions or comments. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Let's take a look. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Thank you, Wyatt, for the update. So, before I get to my questions, I just wanted to at least acknowledge that I think the last time we even contemplated lowering the tax rate was back in 2006, if I recall, from the tax rate history page on the city website. So, that was 15 years ago. So, the fact that we're even debating how much to lower it from $1.355 is a testament, I think, to the hard work of city staff on this budget, so I appreciate that, as well as kind of economic development and obviously our strong residential market. So, I think it's important for us to pause and acknowledge, if not just downright celebrate that it's a pretty remarkable achievement, especially in a year where we've had a pandemic and we've opened the new high school that cost $120 million. So, that's kind of my preamble. But to get to questions, could we go to slide 4, please? That was the capital reserve table. Do you know offhand, because I know that we updated our financial policies where we were supposed to think, based on the amount of debt we were carrying, we wanted to make sure that our total reserves was hitting that percentage mark? Do we know offhand for these fiscal years where we are with that percent? I think we are well above the policy target, correct?
Ms. Bawa?
Yes, Ms. Hardy, we are within the policy target. If you recall, for the years, that the debt service is over 15% of expenditures. Our policy was revised for a target of 20% for the current available balance, which includes the capital reserve as well as the unassigned fund balance. And with this balance, along with that, we are above the 20%. We're over 30% right now.
And do we expect to be over 30% for all the fiscal years outlined, or is it bouncing around a little?
It drops down to in the mid 25 and 22%, however, with the buffer that we built in, we are well above the limit, yeah.
Got it. So, our new policy says that if we have 15% or more of expenditure spent on debt service than our total reserves, which includes capital reserve, unassigned fund balance, need to be at least 20%. And I'm hearing you say that we are at 30% currently, and we are somewhere around 22 to 25, even at the most peak years of debt service.
Right, and that's assuming all the payments are coming in time, and so, I always say that with a caveat, yes.
Absolutely. Okay, well, that feels like a very comfortable margin. Second question is on, given that the options in front of us are using capital reserves, what interest rate are we currently earning on that capital reserve?
Oh, it's our long-term investment rate, and that's somewhere around 1%.
And what about the debt that's for the schools, whether it's that Mount Daniel debt or the George Mason debt? What is?
Yeah, so, those are in SNAP accounts, and those are also much lower than the interest rates that we are paying on it. So, yes.
So, the spread between essentially what we're paying and what we're earning is?
Is small, is quite, quite, yeah, given the market, yes.
Got it. So, we're spending more on debt service, on the debt, than we are earning on the $20 million we have in reserves, or 13 million, I think you're correct. Okay. And then how much MEH debt is expected to roll off? So, in the option 2, where we get to $1.32 tax rate, and I think Wyatt talked about MEH debt coming off in 2026, is that 1.8 million, or how much debt is, do we expect to roll off then?
So, on that particular debt, the Mary Ellen Henderson, we are paying a principal of almost a million and 1/2 each year till 25, fiscal year 25. The interest rates on that one are averaging, since it's dropping, it's averaging about 120,000 or so for the last seven-year kind of window. And that one is still, that was refunded. It was 2003, that was refunded back in 2000, I think, 12. And so, to pay it down to 25, and that was the term that we have. With the 1.5 that we are proposing in that alternative 1 is to pay down the Mount Daniel, and that's the 2014, oh, sorry, 2015, construction loan that we have.
Okay, let me try to rephrase. So, in Alternative Motion 2, where we are using capital reserves to pay debt service, and Wyatt kind of characterized it as a bridge for until 2026, when that MEH debt should roll off?
Right.
How much is that total debt that's coming off?
As of now, on that debt, we have a balance of 6.5 million.
That's the MEH debt?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so I think coming into this, at our last work session, I was pretty comfortable at $1.33, but seeing kind of the options laid out and having more discussion, especially knowing that we're going to have an injection of voluntary concession money into capital reserves, and seeing that our capital reserve balance is very healthy, the difference between the interest rate of what we are earning versus what we're paying is actually significant, I would support kind of the more aggressive path of $1.32 right now. That's it for now.
All right. Thank you. Other folks, other comments or questions? Anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Looks like we've got a hand up. Let me find it. Oh, Mr. Duncan. And I would also note, it looks like Mr. Anderson, Greg Anderson, from the school board is here. You're certainly welcome to speak. Anytime, Mr. Anderson, just put your hand up, and I'll recognize you if you choose to. So, I'm trying to think who was next here. I guess Mr. Duncan, then Vice Mayor Connolly, then Mr. Snyder?
I'm happy to let Vice Mayor Connolly go first, if she wants.
All right, do you want?
No, you go right ahead. You're next.
Okay, I'll be very brief. Thanks to Ms. Hardy for her questions. I think the only little tweak to those that I would say is that I believe that was 2000 and fiscal 2005, when the tax rate was 103, and in fiscal 2006, we lowered it to $1.01. City council did. That would have been in April of 2005, I think. So, it's actually been 16 years since we have lowered the tax rate. I just want to express my thanks to everybody on staff and my fellow counselors for all the effort we've expended to come up with a budget that I think meets the city and schools' needs and is especially responsive to tax rate concerns and the reduction And the reduction has been made possible by lots of hard work, lots of prudent management, lots of good economic development, and it's landed at a very good place, I think. Just one question. The money that's allocated for sidewalk replacement, neighborhood traffic calming, and facilities reinvestment totals $450,000. That's been referred to as something that could be easily replaced with ARPA money. So that's good. I just wanted to note that in our work session on the 19th, it sounds as if the CFO is projecting that right now, we're 1.3% over budget for the current fiscal year, and if we keep on that pace for the next two months, we would end up with a underspend or surplus of more than $600,000. So actually, even without the ARPA money, it looks to me like we would be able to meet those sidewalk, neighborhood traffic calming, and facilities reinvestment needs, which is good. It's also good news. So with that, I think I'm just going to retire and say thanks to everybody who has worked on this, and let's hope we can all join hands on 132. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Conley?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. Can someone put the slides back up again? I think it was slide four that you were just showing. My question is, and it's for Ms. Bawa, can you just explain the difference between alternative one and alternative two? One is paying off actual debt and one is paying off actual debt service? Can you just explain the real difference between those two numbers?
Sure, sure. Vice Mayor, in alternative--
I guess it's not four. Can you back up again, one more? Uh, no.
Maybe even the slide number two. There you go.
That's the one.
So in, sure, so in alternative motion one, we are, the proposal is to pay off 2015 series, the bond that we have, in the amount of 1.5 million using capital reserves. And that would reduce our debt service by 140,000 in fiscal year 22, and roughly about an average of 120,000 annually going forward. And in alternative motion number two, the idea is to take 460,000 from the capital reserve to pay the debt service for the George Mason High School, and that's equivalent to a penny, 460,000. So that's what, that'll relieve the debt, reduce the debt service.
Okay, so alternative motion one is a one-year solution, essentially. Alternative motion two is a multi-year solution because we're not getting as much back the first year--
No, no, let me back up. Sorry. So both are reducing ongoing money. However, we are unable to pay the debt itself for George Mason High School because we have the call period locking. We cannot do that till 26, 2026. So in that case, we are using the capital reserve just to pay the debt service directly.
But then next year, we're still going to have to have money to pay that debt service.
That's correct. So we're going to need to put, use capital reserve in the same amount to reduce the debt service.
All right, okay. Or if we run into trouble with our capital reserve, which we don't expect to, but if we learned anything in the last year, it's that sometimes unexpected things happen. If we run into trouble and can't take money out of the capital reserve, we'd have to increase the tax rate that same penny next year to be able to pay off that debt service.
You can put it that way.
Okay. But that's a penny that we have to, it will be shaved off--
Exactly.
--permanently--
Yes.
Unless we put it back. So we'll have to, that we still owe that money, we just won't be paying it out of the tax rate.
That's correct.
And that situation, I mean, the George Mason High School debt is 30 years, but Mr. Shields was saying we only need to do that for four years to bridge the Mary Ellen Henderson debt.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not really in perpetuity. It's four years of having to cover that amount of money.
Yes.
Okay, but we're only deciding for one, but we're only deciding one year tonight.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that would be true of even alternative motion one. We're deciding only one year.
Thank you. That's my question.
Just to round back up, in alternative one, we're actually paying off the debt, though, which has the effect of not just one year, but for many, or for several years at least, correct?
That's correct. Sorry, yes, you're right.
Okay. So now we've got Mr. Lichtenhouse, Ms. Hardy, and Mr. Snyder. Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks. I don't have any questions. I just have a few comments. So I am still disappointed that we could not find the means to cut the rate further. However, I will support alternative motion two, approving that rate cut to $1.32. And I will say, because I've been fairly vocal in both budget and finance committees, as well as during work session and hearings, I do want to thank city staff and frankly the rest of council for working to find a way to cut it three and a half cents, because it was only a few months ago that we were staring at a flat rate. And I think that, you know, which has been said well by others, this is a, it's a significant accomplishment. And a couple other things. I think it's important, the mechanics of how this rate cut was achieved, because I think it recognizes three very important things. And so for folks that are listening or may take the time to watch this in the archives of Falls Church city history, I want folks to recognize this because I think it's important. First, I think that this cut recognizes the need in earnest of what we have recognized to begin giving back to our taxpayers beyond just services. As many have said, it's been a long time since we've been able to cut a rate, and we still have a long way to go. Second, the ability for us to cut this rate beyond just the $1.33 that we discussed a few weeks ago comes from a use of voluntary concessions in one of our approved commercial development projects. And I think that's important because that money's going to be used to retire debt, and Karen eloquently explained that. And that debt was, of course, taken out to build some of the various capital projects for our community's benefit over the last few years. And as a result of retiring that debt, we're effectively lowering our debt service costs, which are in turn allowing us to lower our operating budget. But I think it's important because just that one level of creativity in terms of retiring debt service or retiring debt as a whole is just a very sound fiscal policy. And so I look at it as really kind of an evolution in the way that council and our city's been looking at the debt that we've taken on. And so I applaud everybody for coming up with that, with that unique solution. And, you know, overall, just looking for opportunities to creatively reduce our carrying costs, I think is just, is a fiscally responsible measure. And frankly, I'm thankful for the message that sends, and I honestly, I hope that we can continue to take measures like that that will keep us in a sound and strong fiscal position. And third, and finally, I think it's important because this conversation shows that all of the economic development, we've talked about this in the past, all of the economic development and commercial development that we have approved and have promised to our community will lead to future dividends, allowing us to do more for our taxpayers from a services and school standpoint. So again, maintaining excellent schools, building in the vibrant community that benefits all of us, it is working. It is working. That is the reason that we are in the position that we are today. And I think that that frankly is going to continue, whether we approve any new projects or not. I mean, where we are right now with the projects that we have approved puts us in a very, very strong position to be able to have these conversations year over year. And I think furthermore, probably most importantly, this, and I'm very proud to be part of this conversation, so that we can maintain a budget at City Hall and in the schools while continuing to reduce the tax rate at the same time. And I want to conclude with this because I have spent months studying the budget more than I thought I would, analyzing our own economic development growth, looking at just economic development trends in the broader area, as well as the fiscal impact from the projects that we've approved. And based on my findings, and here's the marker that I want to lay down tonight, this is all a great time for us to pat ourselves on the back, but this is something that I feel very strongly about. I am confident, if not certain, that we will have the ability to reduce our tax rate to something closer to $1.20 within the next five years. That's the line I'm drawing in the sand tonight. And within 10 years, I truly believe we will have the ability to reduce our tax rate to $1.10. Now, this is barring any kind of geopolitical catastrophe or some unknown that's around the corner, but thinking optimistically, glasses half full, those are the rates that I think are sustainable for a city that will allow us to continue to maintain excellent services in schools while also giving money back to the city. And that's coming from a lot of different areas. Overall net fiscal growth from the recently approved projects, it's going to come from the injection of relief funds that are coming for sure over the next few months, and it's going to come frankly from our overall assessment growth due to demand from people that want to live in Falls Church, to experience the environment that we are creating and have created over these many years, and to recognize the schools. It's going to come, and it has been coming, from families that want to move to the city of Falls Church to experience our excellent schools. And so being able to accomplish all this at the same time is an incredible achievement. And I believe that our city is better positioned than probably at any point in recent history to experience a true embarrassment of riches. Fully fund our schools, city services, take care of those in need, and give back to our taxpayers while practicing sound fiscal policy at the same time. It is truly a beautifully designed, perfect storm. And finally, I am looking forward to two things over the next year, and I'm laying this market down with the rest of the folks on council. First, it's going to decide, it's going to be how we best decide to give money back to our taxpayers from these relief funds. That's something that actually excites me over the next couple of months. And then second, I look forward to talking with council members in the not-too-distant future about building a budget for fiscal year 2023 that allows us to meaningfully cut the tax rate again next year. For me, this is a momentous occasion, I think folks have hit on it, but I am truly excited because this is something that I wanted to accomplish when I first decided to run for council, and we've done it. And that has been taking part in cutting a stubbornly high tax rate in the midst of a pandemic. That should not be lost on anybody. And doing that while maintaining the budget guidance that we gave for schools and cities. So I'm hoping that this is not an exception, and I am hoping, and I'm optimistic, that we'll have the courage to accomplish this year after year, serve the needs of everyone in the community and our schools, and do it in a fiscally responsible manner. And so those rates that I mentioned are something that I would love for us to work towards and achieve, because I expect for this to be the norm, not the exception, to get us back to that glorious, what was that, 2006 rate, Phil, of like a dollar? That's crazy. That's like Loudon talk, and we don't even have data centers. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity. And again, I'm not happy that we couldn't get below $1.32, but I'm very happy that we've achieved three and a half cents, and I think we've got more room to move in the future. And again, I'm just really, really pleased to have been a part of this and very thankful at the creative solutions that we came up, came up with to get us there. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you. Well, that was hard to follow, but I actually just had a question again. So in whatever option we end up with, it sounds like we are getting close to $1.32. And I know that there's certainly desire among council to do so, but I would like us to commit tonight to actually be restoring that 450,000 in Pago by the end of the year, whether that's through federal funds when it comes through, whether it's from NFY21 surplus that we might get. But those are all things that are important to us, traffic calming, sidewalks, facilities reinvestment. And while we're able to responsibly kind of take that out of operating budget, I want to make sure that's not lost as we talk about future money. So Wyatt, what is the best mechanism for us to kind of commit ourselves to that?
It could simply be by motion, or we could come back to council with a resolution to that effect, but probably the easiest way to do it would be to express it in a motion.
Just add it to whatever budget motion we have?
I believe so. Maybe as we're getting closer to the votes, I could have a quick side panel with the city attorney.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. So it's nice to be able to vote for a reduction in the tax rate. I think I was around the last time this occurred in 2006, so it's glad to be back here. But I will say in the interim, the fact of the matter is that geopolitical things do happen. And within four years after that rate cut and the lower rate that's already been allotted tonight, there was something called the financial crisis, which challenged the long-term stability not only of this city, but most local governments and the country as a whole. So even though I'm very pleased to vote for the 1.32 tonight, I do so with the sense that we have adequate levels of fallback protection, that it will not be, at least in the foreseeable future, an imprudent act. But I have to say, I am not going to engage in long-term thinking beyond what's reasonably foreseeable right now, because I know what can happen and happen surprisingly fast and in a surprisingly harsh manner. So the fact of the matter is that geopolitical things have happened in the past, and they may happen again. So this is a modest approach. On the other hand, it provides some fairness to taxpayers. You know, we hear a lot about fairness for everyone, and this is a vote tonight for fairness for taxpayers as well as providing a high level of school and other services. Secondly, the second proposed option is really using capital funds to cover capital-related costs. This is not a situation where we're using capital to replace our current operating expenses, but rather we're using capital reserves to pay off capital-related costs. In view of the likelihood of federal funding, in view of generally what seems to be an upswing in the economy, in view of what looks like underspending from last fiscal year, you put all that together, and even in small amounts, we have more than enough to provide the cushion that I think we should prudently ask for even as we lower the rate. So I'm pleased that we all worked very, very hard to get there, and it's much appreciated. But I for one am not going to say to set a target five years out without knowing a whole lot more about the circumstances and recognizing that unpredictable things, devastating unpredictable things do happen. And so always a degree of caution and prudence is called for. With regard to the contributions of economic development, I think they're there. Oftentimes, I wish they were more and have often advocated for more commercial, for example, because I think we continue to have an issue with the overwhelming reliance of our tax rate purely on residential. And I think that's great, and we need to maintain the services that people feel that they're getting good value in return for what they're paying on the residential side. But I continue to believe we need more commercial, we need more diversity in our tax rate. And while we've gotten a little bit, my hope for economic development in the future is to get more of that kind of commercial residential split that most folks would say is fundamental for long-term stability. I also like the notion of committing. I helped identify the pay-as-you-go categories. I only did so after we had a pretty good sense that these were the categories that would qualify for federal funding, but they are major priorities of mine as well, and would look forward to making sure that we find ways to fund traffic calming and the other elements that we have identified for pay-as-you-go. So those are my comments, and I look forward to voting for the 1.32 tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hiscott.
Yes, so I'd actually like to go ahead and make a motion. Can I go ahead and do that now?
Sure, please.
I'd like to move that we set our tax rate at $1.32, and include, if it's appropriate, include in this motion the statement that we will be restoring our pay-as-you-go by year-end, as referenced by my colleague, Ms. Hardy.
So--
A second.
Okay, so I want to ask the city attorney, is that motion, do you have any issue with any of that?
Well, I would suggest that you not, you cannot make a motion that's going to require council to vote a particular way in the future, but that you-- council to vote a particular way in the future, but that you recommend that the city manager propose ways for council to restore that, the capital reserves by the end of the year, so that he comes forward with that and then council can consider it. But you just can't sort of foreordain people's votes for the future.
So update that motion to state that I moved that our tax rate be set at $1.32 and with a request to city manager to provide opportunity, to provide recommendations on how to restore the pay-as-pay-go by year-end.
All right. And I'm going to ask the seconder, Mr. Snyder, if that's agreeable to amend the motion?
Yes, it is. Thanks.
Okay. So we have a.
Can you repeat the rate? I'm sorry.
Well, and actually, can we maybe, so the way that we've laid this out in terms of process would be first to adopt the budget and then adopt the CIP and then adopt the tax rate. And so the motion with respect to the tax rate would be the third item, I think in the terms of the way that we would typically lay this out. And so the, the, the motion that would affect, I think, the discussion that the council's had and the consensus that's been expressed tonight would be, Cindy, if you go back to the budget item. So, yeah, it would be to adopt the, the budget, so adopt TO25 after making the reallocation that we've discussed. And then, and the next item is when we'll take, set the tax rate. Sorry, sorry for that.
I mean, I'm not sure we need to go in that order. I don't think there's anything requiring that. If, if that's more sensible and logical, I guess I'm happy to sort of call and ask for motions in that order. But I don't think there's anything that requires it to be in that order. Does it, city attorney?
It, it doesn't. And I, I think since we have a motion on the table that's for the tax rate, which is the same corresponding motion that would go with the, the budget item, we can do the tax rate first.
Okay. So before we take a vote on the tax rate, I'm going to do two things. One, I'm going to ask for a public comment. Is there any public comment relating to the tax rate or any of the other items we've called that are before council right now?
I have no comment on any of the items.
All right. So public comment is now closed as to all those items. Secondly, I'm going to ask if there are any additional comments. I saw Mr. Duncan's hand up briefly. I don't know if you had additional comments you wanted to make, or anyone else have any comments that weren't yet made at this time before we take a vote?
No, thanks. My question was answered.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yeah, I do have a few things I want to say about this budget process. First of all, this is the third year in a row that we have operated within the spirit of revenue sharing. And that means that we have worked arm-in-arm with the school board and general government staff and school staff have worked together to develop a budget. City council has laid out budget guidance and the school board has met budget guidance three years in a row. If I think back to four, five, and six years ago, the budget vote was often about many, many school staff and city employees coming and talking. And it was a very emotional evening. And I'm really pleased that we have moved into an era of budgeting where we are worrying about whether we're going to reduce it by three cents or two cents or three and a half cents. So that is a huge step forward. And I want to thank all of our partners in the city council, school boards, school staff and general government staff. And this works because, because it works, because we've all put our hand in and said this is how it's going to happen and we've been strong partners. So at the end of fiscal year 2021, when all the books are arranged, I just want to remind everyone that the second part of a revenue sharing agreement is that if there is additional revenue, we split that 50-50 with the schools. We did that last year in FY20, and I would hope that we would plan to do the same thing in FY2021. And again, it, it works, so let's just keep up what works. This is really a much better process than ever before. I do continue to have concerns about some unfunded items in the general government budget that I think are very important to add. And staff presented a lot of those in videos and in conversations. And I have mentioned at least three times, if not four, my concern that the city attorney's office should have a second attorney. And so I would like to continue adding that and ask Mr. Shields to put that at the top of the list of unfunded needs. If there are additional funds that are available and there's a way to fund that position, I think that is one that is really important to add to our, to our budget. But I am, when Mr. Shields mentioned to me that we might be at 1.34.5, I couldn't believe that we were going to cut one penny. So to cut another two and a half pennies from the tax rate really has taken a lot of work, a lot of thinking about things differently, a lot of planning, so much attention being paid to what's happening on the national level and the state level. So I really do want to again, express my thanks to staff for making that happen and, and my colleagues for working through all of this with me, with one another, and listening to the public so that we can come up with something that works for all of us. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hiscott.
Mary Beth said several things I was thinking as well, so I just want to amplify her perspective on the process and how it's improved over time and the work you all on, at city and schools and on council have done to get to this point, to work together. So again, just to ensure that we continue to follow through on that with revenue sharing as appropriate. And also just on continuing to think about what needs have been unfunded and will continue to improve upon the city. I, I do think this tax rate serves multiple purposes in terms of improving things for many people have had a really difficult year throughout the pandemic, reaching some goals that we've had for quite some time about reducing the tax rate, but still being fiscally conservative. There are multiple ways that we can support this tax cut. But I do look forward to seeing what happens with our ARPA funds and how we can continue to support many of those infrastructure needs that have been identified through a lot of our boards and commissions and, and our citizens too. So we can continue to see how the federal funds will support us in addition to anything that comes from our, our developments coming online later this year and then hopefully quickly following behind it at West Falls. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Sure. One additional comment. The other reluctance I have to go lower than the 1.32 at this point is that to provide public safety in the demands of today and the equity goals of today will require more money, whether it's for mental health expertise or more training or more police officers. And I think this budget provides additional funds for policing and, and that will be a major priority for me going forward to maintain the very highest levels of public safety. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Other comments before we go to a vote? So I'm just going to speak briefly about economic development. One of the reasons that motivated me to, to run for council was I felt like we could do better, particularly in downtowns. We could revitalize our downtown areas, our commercial corridor with smarter growth. And we have undertaken a long and I think thoughtful process of planning, not hodgepodge, but careful planning over these past years and have begun and in the midst of transforming our downtown to, I think, a very exciting, walkable, modern place where people want to be. And I think that's evidenced by the fact that property values continue to increase. It's a desirable place. And the purpose of that wasn't just for its own sake, but to provide economic revenue for A, our schools, and B, to fund other services, and C, ultimately to go back to the taxpayers. And much of this has gone to the schools. During my tenure in office, Mount Daniel has had a major renovation, TJ has had a significant renovation, and we built a brand-new high school. And when Phil and I got in office, you know, people said, you can't do it. You're not going to be able to build a new high school. You can't fund it. The city can't afford it. It can't be done. And here we are, a few years later, not only with a brand-new high school that's open, but we're talking about in the same breath, lowering our taxes. So I think smart economic growth, measured economic growth, consistent with the values of our community and our neighbors, buddying the properties, has provided tremendous benefits. And I now, I'm excited that today, after so many years, we're actually able to start pushing the rate down lower. And I think as new projects come online, we have a Whole Foods that's approved, that'll take a few years to get built, but that will be a very exciting development for our downtown and will leave, it'd be a catalyst for more economic development in the area. Grocery stores generate a whole ton of commercial revenue. We have 10 acres that we have planned for some really exciting development. And we have Founder's Road that's about to come online. And who knows what's after that. But I think again, through a careful planning process of thoughtful development, we've really done some good things for the city. And I know there's much more to come. So I'm excited for this budget. I think we're turning the corner on our tax rate and I look forward to future economic development and future conversations about how we can continue to lower our tax rate while maintaining our high-quality schools and city services. So anyway, that's all I have to say. Unless anyone's got anything else, let's go ahead and move to a vote on this first item that's now before us. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly? Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council. We still have three other items.
All right. Do we have a motion on one of the other three items?
I'll move to adopt TO21-04 after reallocating $460,000 from capital reserves to debt service in the non-departmental budget to cover debt service for the recent high school.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Next item, TO5?
Yes, the CIP TO21-05 is next on the list.
We have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move TO21-05. This is Snyder.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
So Ms. Hardy on the second. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We have a motion regarding the last item. Which is?
That's TO21-07 is setting the Stormwater Utility billing rate.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TO21-07.
So we have Ms. Hiscott. And then, do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Connolly on the second. Do we have a third? I'm kidding. So let's go ahead and go to the vote.
Yes. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
Yes, we have a resolution, TR21-10, resolution to affirm the de-allocation of highway safety improvement program funds from UPC 117571 Haycock Road pedestrian hawk signal.
Mr. Shields?
Could I ask Mr. Bradley to give the staff report?
Mr. Bradley?
Good evening, everybody. So this resolution before you tonight is to de-allocate the hawk signal that was originally proposed at the intersection of Haycock and Mustang Alley. Since the initial conceptual phase of the West Falls Church project, the intersection has transitioned to a full signal. Unfortunately, with the way the H-SIP money is structured, we are unable to convert the hawk signal to a traffic signal. So we must de-allocate the money. And I won't say cancel the project, because we're still going to build the traffic signal, but cancel the H-SIP funding. From fiscal impact, this work is covered under the NVTA grant as part of the West Falls Church development. So, so the city will not have to pick up that tab of returning $750,000 to VDOT. So tonight, staff is requesting that you take a formal action de-allocating the project so that VDOT may proceed and redistribute the funds to the northern Virginia area.
Got it. And so I think this question has been asked in the past. I would do, ask it nonetheless. So we cannot move this hawk signal somewhere else in the city. It's either here or the money goes back according to VDOT rules. Is that right?
That is correct. The, the H-SIP funding is very structured and very project and site-dependent. So even the smallest change causes at least a rescoring, given the scope change from a hawk to a traffic signal. We have confirmed with VDOT that it would not score well.
Got it. All right. Are there any questions or comments? All right. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TR21-10.
All right. Ms. Connolly, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hiscott on the second. Any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. Let's go ahead then.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right. So we've got some consent agenda items next, some appointments. It looks like that's all it is, is appointments. Mr. Shields, anything to say? Any comments?
No, sir. Many thanks to all those who've stepped forward to serve.
All right. Do we have a motion regarding?
To adopt the consent agenda.
Ms. Hardy, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, or Ms. Duncan, Mr. Duncan, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Lippkenhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
And Mayor Tarter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
All right. We're on to either business not on the agenda, standing committee reports, council liaison reports, or council member comments in general. Do we have any? We heard about the Women's March. We are, thanks particularly to Ms. Vice Mayor Connolly for her great work in promoting that. And it's been a great event in past years. We know it's going to be an exciting one this year as well. But Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks. I'll add on to that. Thank you for your confidence that it's going to be a great event. There's been a wonderful group of people who have been working on this, and I want to say a huge thank you to Sally Eckfeldt, Nancy Brandon, Julie Crachman, Marty Muserv, Beth Hahn, Nikki Graves Henderson, and I hope I haven't forgotten anyone, who are working so hard to make this a really nice event. We have all new signs. So there'll be large signs, so people will be able to stand far enough away to be socially distanced. There are three starting points, and I just want to point out that if everyone goes to a different starting point and starts at a different time and a different spot, then we won't all be jammed in one area. So there are starting points at Big Chimneys Park, at the Tanner Hill Historic Site, and at City Hall. And there's parking in all of those areas. So just pick the one that works the best for you, and then it's a loop. So you can do the loop at your own pace. You don't have to show up exactly at 11:00. The stations will be open between 11:00 and 2:00. We've also talked to a number of restaurants along the route, and they will be open and ready to serve. So if you want to support the local economy in addition to walking, you could do that and have brunch or lunch at one of our restaurants, or get some drinks or treats along the way. And it should be a great event.
We're also recognizing some young women of action who have taken action within their school communities in the past year to make a difference. And we're recognizing 44 entrepreneurial women, the ones who were featured during Women's History Month. So there'll be a lot of people. The Historical Commission has also provided a list of about 10 historical sites and markers along the route, so those will also be marked. So there's a lot to do. And there will be another six community groups that will also have booths out. So this is the first time that people in Full Street have been able to do something together since last February. So we are expecting a lot of people, and hopefully it's a nice day. If it's raining, we're going to move it to May 16th, but fingers crossed, this Sunday will be a wonderful Women's History Month. And I know that... I know Mr. Snyder is on the list to volunteer, as well as Ms. Hiscott and Mr. Hardy. So if anyone else wants to volunteer along the way, you're welcome to. But I really encourage everyone to come, enjoy, and learn a lot about the City of Falls Church history.
All right, thank you.
And also tie it into the fitness challenge. That's the other thing, the Mayor's Fitness Challenge. If you're doing that, you can add a good hour to the Mayor's Fitness Challenge for your minutes.
Is that Dave running a marathon, and we cheer him on? Is that what that...
Yes.
Probably through a marathon.
It'll be a long marathon.
I'll stand outside for that one and cheer you on, Dave. Good luck with that. Hey, Dave, Mr. Mayor, I did have one thing. I didn't want Councilwoman Hiscott to think that we actually had meetings that ended before midnight. So I thought maybe we could introduce another exotic animal ordinance or something else that would compel passionate speeches for the next three hours.
Well, we could combine exotic animal, the noises from exotic animals, and make sure it goes extra long.
And you could put them on scooters. We could put them on scooters.
That's right. We should have another scooter. So I got another three hours in me, because I don't want Ms. Hiscott thinking that we're...
Let me just ask the Celeste... How do I mute someone? Is there a way that I can mute?
Oh, I can handle that, sir.
All right. All right, what else have we got? We're one minute over 9 o'clock, which is a new world's record nearly.
Yeah, we can't have that. Actually, a serious question, Celeste, are about minutes. I watched the Planning Commission meeting the other night, and they appear to be plowing through minutes. Are we allowed to do minutes?
They're going to have to re-adopt all of them when they get back in person, but they're going ahead and doing it anyway, which is fine. But we chose to do it this way.
Okay.
It's part of the whole emergency thing.